Walker, do you see Commissioner Walker outside the door right there? If not, we're going to move. Y'all ready? Commissioner of the world is ready.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I call this off.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, July the 1st, 2020. Notice is hereby given that a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas, will be held this date. The time is 9:00 a.m. We're at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas, at which time the following subjects will be discussed and acted upon to win. The meeting has been called to order. I would ask that if you would, please rise for the invocation. Remain standing with the pledge of the U.S. and the Texas flag. Shall we pray? Father, dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings of this life. We thank you for this week that leads to a day of celebration, this 4th of July coming up. It speaks of the independence of our nation, a free nation. Father, we ask that you be with us, this particular, this Commissioners' Court, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of this county. Father, we would ask that you give the same privilege to those that govern our state, those that govern our country, that the decisions that they make would keep us a free nation for years and years and years, decades and centuries to come. Let us be the example to the rest of the world. Father, we pray for peace within our county, within our state, and within our nation. We ask that you keep our citizens safe over this holiday weekend. We ask that you help them to use their common sense and good judgment as they travel, as they gather together. Father, we just thank you for your love and the blessings of this life. And it's in your son's precious name we pray, Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? The court will now move to public comments. If you have a public comment, you do need to have it registered. I do have one registration. We would ask that you limit your comments, if possible, to a two-minute period. The court would like to call Ms. Karen Schreiber. If you'd come to the podium, please.
Thank you. As you know, my name is Karen Schreiber. I am the librarian at the Vdais Museum and Library. I retired out of southwest Houston as a school librarian. I'm also a certified public librarian. And the reason I'm here today is because I got a very sweet thank you note from one of the children that I've worked with for the past 10 and 1/2 years that the library's been open. We kind of developed a relationship just through her coming to the library. And so I got a note that said, "Dear Ms. Karen, thank you so much for the graduation gifts you sent me. They will definitely be put to good use. Thank you for all the fun weekends and the memories at the library. Signed, Evy." And what it made me realize is that in the 10 and 1/2 years, that I used to drive up on weekends from Houston and run this little library because we knew that someday we would retire up here. And so, over all of those years, I never made it to a Commissioners' meeting to say, "Thank you." You are our only regular source of funding. And right now, we get about $5,000 a year from the county commissioners, and then we scramble to try and raise the rest. The library is run completely by volunteers, and the bills that we pay are minimal. We have, every book that we have, out of 12,000 books, has been donated to the library. And because the library was there and operational when COVID-19 shut everything down, I already had the connections to be able to do free book giveaways and deliveries to children throughout Grimes County. We've delivered in Vdais, Iola, Singleton, and Chi-Ro. And so far, we have delivered 3,000 free books to the porches of families and had their kids have something new to read at home. We're doing another book giveaway probably this week, and then we have enough free books that we've already gotten to do it again. But the only reason that we were in place to do that is because the county commissioners have supported the library and kept it open. Right now, when we get ready to do a book delivery, we're using my car. But it takes us a bit solid three days of working at the library just to get everything packaged up and know who's getting which books for which age groups and what grade levels. And you guys are the ones that have made that possible. So I thank you for your support. Like I said, when I got this thank you note, it made me realize that I've never been here. I think you're my commissioner because I live up in north Vdais. And, you know, it's just, it's truly appreciated. And just this week, they put the Vdais Library onto the county website so that we're officially listed. We are a public library. We report every year, we report our figures to the state of Texas. We're not a fully accredited library because you have to have a guaranteed $12,000 a year in funding for that. But it's okay because we're still open to the public. And my daughter's a librarian in Houston, so we have a relationship with the Houston Public Library. When people want ebooks, we just hook them up through the Houston Public Library. So we've been able to make some connections that way. But I, by the time July is over, we will have delivered over 4,000 free books to people at home. And we have now officially registered the front porch of the Vdais Library as a free little library. So we keep that stocked, and we've had probably over 300 books right now that adults get to go to the porch and get something. So even though we haven't felt like we could open, I'm one of the youngest volunteers, and I'm 61. Because we are just run by volunteers, we've decided to keep the library closed, but we are serving the community. And having that facility there is what's made this possible. So thank you, thank you very much.
Since Ms. Schreiber, since you are a licensed librarian, would you just give us one of those shh, quiet, please?
Oh, you know, libraries have changed, though.
They have.
Because when we meet on the weekends, we are doing art projects and science projects. And generally speaking, by the time we get done, not only have we not shushed the children, but the parents are starting to get a little noisy, too. And one of our mottos is, "You're never too old for a good book, and you're never too old to come and explore all the projects we're doing."
Nice to finally meet you. We talked on the phone, but I want to say thank you for the service that you're doing. Do keep up with the Vdais Library. Seen the car loaded down, and I work with books, so I know how heavy they can be. So thank you for keeping the community abreast and alive.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't have any other requests. Commissioners, do any of you have a comment that you'd like to make?
I'd just like to maybe reemphasize that this weekend is a holiday weekend. We're grateful to still be here to witness it. I would ask that we follow CDC guidelines, and let's have a great time, and social distance, and wear our mask, and try to stay safe. Be mindful of each other. So I just appreciate being able to enjoy the liberties and the freedoms that we have in these United States of America.
Well, you kind of stole my thunder, but that's all right.
I'm so sorry.
No, 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 that's all right. My public comment is simply to piggyback on what Commissioner Walker said. And just to keep the public informed, we have not made any changes to our resolution. It's previously put in place. We are following the guidelines of what Governor Abbott has requested. But there's so much information out there, and you can believe what you want, or you can read through until you find something that you want that agrees with what your beliefs are. At the end of the day, I would just ask everybody to please use common sense. And just keep in mind, some of the decisions that you do indeed make certainly affect the people that are around you. Have a safe 4th of July weekend. Enjoy the celebration time, and thanks for being a citizen of Grimes County. With that, are there any other public comments, Commissioners?
Could I ask you one question?
Am I not supposed to ask questions in public comments?
Well, maybe I could. Our buildings, public buildings are still remaining open.
All of the county buildings are still open as we speak. And that's on Wednesday. And at this point, I have not had any indication that any of those buildings are shutting. If you do happen to get a court notice, the restrictions for the courthouse have become a little bit more rigid in the fact that if you come into the courthouse for court, going to the second floor for either county court or district court, well, it'll be county court, because district court's not being held. But you will be required to wear a mask. If you don't have a mask, a mask will be provided for you. Also, you would be, was the requirement with gloves also? No, not a requirement. But if you want to use gloves, that's quite all right. So those restrictions are in place. But other than jury duty and things of that sort, the county is business as usual in these unusual times. Thank you, Commissioner. With that, we will go to consent agenda items. These are items identified within the consent agenda are a matter of routine nature and will be passed with one vote without being discussed separately. If a member of the court requests that a particular item be discussed prior to the meeting, the agenda item will be pulled from the consent agenda and discussed as part of the regular agenda at the appropriate time. One vote will approve the remaining items of the consent agenda. Agenda item number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. We do have the reports in front of us. We've had those for at least 72 hours. I move to approve consent agenda items three and four. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker on consent agenda items number three and four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number five. Runbridge engineer Harry Walker, consider application for a proposed replat of CCC Estates Lot 4 to create two lots designated as 4A, which would be 2.15 acres, and 4B, which would be 2.604 acres. That is our attachment number five. And also, you have a full-size plat in front of you. Mr. Walker?
As we discussed in the public hearing, the proposed replat meets all of our criteria. Both lots are over 2 acres. They are eligible for both well-inseptic or, in this case, they actually have public water, so they have excess acreage. We are recommending approval of this replat at this time.
I move to approve the proposed replat of CCC Estates Lot 4 as presented. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number five by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries.
Good luck to you, sir.
And you have the plot for signatures?
I do.
So Commissioners, I would ask that you don't jump and run out of German until you get that signed. I'm not calling any names, Commissioner Cox.
I'm smiling, Judge. You can't see me, but I'm smiling.
Your eyebrows are raised. I thought that went with the smile.
That's a leak communication technique.
All right. Agenda item number six, Grimes County IT Director Greg Cannon, considering take action to approve new copier contracts for UBO to reduce annual cost to county by estimated $2,814. See attachment number six. Mr. Cannon, good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners?
Good morning.
Did y'all have any questions about the copiers? What sparked is, is that over the last two years, we've tried to streamline the number of copiers. We have streamlined the model. We have co-turn all the contracts where they expire at the same time every year, so it's easier for us to manage. Previously, we had 24 contracts, and they were expiring at all different times of the year, which was hard to keep up with. We got them to co-turn those where they expire now in June. And after we got that done, we started looking at the number of copies because these maintenance contracts are based on the number of impressions or copies or prints that you make per year. And I noticed that some of them seemed excessively high, so we had them audit all 30 of the copier 24 contracts. And they got us all the information back. We took the media readings at the end of the year, and we found that some of the copiers, we were paying for 30,000 impressions a year when we only needed maybe 12, or we were paying 18, only needed 12. So we got them to adjust those numbers. And what resulted in that is that the new contracts were going to, if we sign these today, for the next year. It's a reduction of about $2,800 out of our budget and savings, so.
So I was adding up some of the figures on these. I think we exceeded the $50,000 threshold for fitting requirements.
I guess explain, because these are just yearly maintenance contracts. Are you saying if we add up the maintenance? I think the total maintenance cost for all these copiers is just over $11,000 a year.
So let's just look, maybe I need some clarification on this. If you look down at, just take the one on the top, where it says minimum charge per unit on a black and white maintenance for 12 months is $137.28. Is that per month or per year?
That's per year, 13 cents per year.
Okay.
That's just the maintenance cost. We, all these printed, all these copiers, we purchased.
Right. But the maintenance contract as a whole, doesn't exceed $50,000?
No. And we...
Then did we go back to carbon paper?
And previously...
Said if it did, we go back to carbon paper.
Previously, we had contracts with Rico, with UBO, with Precision, and with Xerox. We opted to choose one provider so that we'd have greater buying power.
Good question. One question I have, if approved, it doesn't request the signatory on there. Would that be the IT director for approval? Or would that be the county judge or someone else? What's your desire?
It doesn't matter to me if you want to sign or if you'd like for me to sign. These contracts are identical to last year, except the number of impressions have changed.
Right. It's really up to the court who they want to monitor that, so.
Actually, with the judge signing, he kind of keeps it uniform across all areas.
But I just wanted to give the court the option. One last question I have. If we do, let's say we're contracted on copier A for 12,000, but we happen to run 12,500. Is the additional 500, is that cost exorbitant, or is it within reason?
No, it's within reason. And working with the auditors, we have certain allowances that we budget for because we never know how many colored copiers you're going to print that year. You just never know what's going to come up during the print. But I think on most of these, the colored copiers, like 7 cents a copy in black and white is like less than, or just over a penny. Looking at the total impressions, we didn't go over on that much. I think there's places we can reduce. From an IT standpoint, we're going around to the different offices. And when they hit file print, if they've got a color copier, we make sure that the default is black and white so they don't accidentally print color when they need to. But we've looked at those total overages, and they're not exorbitant. But we do have some overages, and they're allowed, they're accounted for in the budget.
And everybody doesn't have a color printer, right?
Right. There's only, I don't know the exact number, but there's less than a handful of colored copiers in the count. Most of them are black and white.
So how would you distinguish which figure is applied? If you have two figures, one for black and white, one for color.
Well, you have one applied. On the, you show me an example you're looking at.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. But like I said, they allow so many, for instance, on the black and white, as part of this contract for this price they're giving us, they're allowing 142,000 impressions in black and white. They're allowing 4,860 in color. If we go over that, it's 7 cents per copy over that for the color and a penny for black and white. What we try to do from a budget standpoint is look at the media readings last year and say, "Okay, well, they went over by 3,000 copies. We need to adjust the minimums on our contract so that we're not charged those, the fees higher if you go over." So if we put it within our budget to say, "Last year, we said we wanted allowance of 4,000, and we paid for anything above that." Now we need to bump that to 8,000 so that we don't pay that 7 cents per copy. Maybe we're paying 2 cents per copy if you factor it out. So we look at those overage numbers year to year to see if they need to be adjusted up or down. Does that make sense? And like I said, for these contract prices, we get so many black and white and so many color on a colored copier. And if you go over that, we pay the overages. But what we try to do is we, from our standpoint, we try to reduce the number of overages. But from, if we continue to go over, we raise those contracts so that it saves us money.
We have the ability to do that annually, correct?
If there are no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new copier contracts with UBO to reduce annual cost to county by an estimated $2,814 and the county judge as signatory.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. The adjustment to that is having, and county judge as signatory. Is there any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you do on that. Agenda item number seven, Grimes County Sheriff's Office Department, Chief Todd Green, consider and take action to approve the cleaning service contract between A1 Professional Cleaning and Grimes County Law Enforcement Center. See attachment number seven. Chief, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a proposal for cleaning services for a front half of our building to include the county attorney's office, the detective's office, the director of staff to have their offices cleaned.
Did you say half of the building?
Yeah, the front half.
Front half?
Yes. So anything back in the security area, the jail park, won't be being cleaned by this service. We're still cleaning the back part with inmates. It's just the front part. We can't have inmate workers out
Okay.
outside of the jail during this time. So we're trying to get the front back and the rest of the stuff, all employees, visitors that come in.
Will it include the JP's office?
The JP's, they said no. They didn't want their building cleaned. The county attorney's office, yes.
The JP's not getting their office cleaned?
They decided they didn't want their cleaned. And actually, some of the quotes that you probably have, did include JP's office. I know A1's changed, and then on the, on the Benz cleanup, I asked for a three-day quote also. And they came back and changed their pricing on the two-day and the three-day. So when in-house, those are obviously our most expensive ones. And they require us to pay for the cleaning materials also. So they're going to be the highest. So Benz will be the second highest, and then A1 is going to be the lowest. They have an initial cleaning fee of $450, but then their new price has changed from the two-day during business hours, $8.63. Two days after business hours, $813. Three days during business hours, $1,015. And then three days after business hours, $970. And the reason that quote was, we had a reach-in force to take out the JP's because they weren't informed of that when they submitted their quote. The other two companies were informed of it. So we wanted to make sure that all the quotes were not equal to theirs.
Just a question of curiosity, who's going to clean the JP office?
I'm assuming, I guess their employees will. They'll probably set their trash out, and then we take the trash. But as far as vacuuming and cleaning and all that, I guess their employees are going to take care of that. But when you look at the numbers, you know, even with the initial $450 cleaning fee with A1, you know, I'm projecting this to the end of the year. So I put everybody on a six-month time. If we go with the two days, we'll pay one. You know, whether we do business hours or non-business hours, I actually tend to prefer the business hours just because a lot of offices have sensitive material and sensitive equipment in there. And I, you know, we lock those offices up a part of it when we're not there. So, and then to have somebody come in and escort it.
So is it your recommendation to do it during business hours?
Yeah.
What's your recommendation, two-day or three-day?
Well, when we first started this, obviously, we weren't quite sure of funding and stuff like that. Obviously, the speaker was married on this, and this is going to classify us under steps one through three.
For COVID expenditure fund?
The spender's sure fund from the grant. So obviously, you know, cleaner the better, so.
Three-day.
Not three days after speaking of that.
Your coach is back there giving signals, so he's doing like this. So I guess that means the three-day versus the two-day.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was fastball or curveball there for a minute, but.
I mean, it'll be, for six months, if we do it to the end of the year, it'd be $65,000 and $40,000. And that's including the initial $450 fee.
But again, we've confirmed with MJ and auditing that we can put this on the CARES Act and that we can be refunded these funds because this is, we're restricted on how we used to do the cleaning. Now we have a new way of, or a new requirement that is required with the cleaning, correct?
Yeah, we're not able to use a current cleaning method, and so we're having to actually bring in, and spend some bucks to do this.
Do you know if these costs cover the visitation section?
It should, yes.
Okay.
Are we still having visitation there?
No.
No, but there, they bombed, there were about 20 dead bugs in there when I magistrate this weekend. No, that's...
I swept the lobby and everything this Friday. Even now, you can test, keep, stay, and actually pushing and burning.
Undoubtedly, you did that.
I did not do that.
I didn't say undoubtedly, Chief, you did a bad job this weekend.
I did not do that one in this far away here.
But that's not your expertise, we understand. Okay, so for our decision-making purposes, you recommend A1?
Yes.
You recommend three-day, and you recommend during office hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, and this falls under the one, two, and three of the COVID?
That is correct. And that's the one we're having difficulty covering. So this benefits us in a couple ways.
And they, you know, it's not a set time, it's a month along, Bill.
It's a month along.
We have three days to provide notice of cancellation.
Has the county attorney had an opportunity to review these?
Yes, yes.
And he's given his okay?
Yes. And then we just need to have somebody authorized to sign it before they take myself there for this.
Do you know the contact at A1?
It should be on there, on the first page.
Okay. Andrea?
Andrea, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And they've been in business 20 years in the Houston area and nine in the Brazos Valley area. And they've been in business 20 years in the Houston area and nine in the Valley area. And they do background checks and all that for you.
I guess that would be a requirement working over in the jail area.
Is there no further questions? I move that we take action to approve the cleaning service with A1 Professional Cleaning, three days. And who do we want as signatory? Chief Deputy.
I, in this situation, I would prefer the chief to do it because he's going to be, since it's in a different building, he's going to be eyes on in that particular area.
And Chief Todd Green is signatory on the contract.
Or, or we could give it to Mr. Peeler, you know, from, no. So the addition to that is Chief Green?
Yes.
All right. Was there a second? I'm sorry.
I did say.
Okay, thank you, sir. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item-
Don't run off, I'm going to sit you right after, after our meeting.
Agenda item number eight, Emergency Management Services Coordinator David Lilly. He has asked that we put this to the next agenda. He has been working with Plannersville BFD Chief, but because of work schedules, they just haven't been able to dot the i's and cross the t's. So he's asked for the, to be placed on the next agenda. So no action? That'll bring us down to agenda item number nine, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. We're drying out again, but everything's fairly green. The, I guess the one thing that bothers me is the amount of wind we've had. But if you look at the forecast, which is subject to change minute by minute, Saturday and Sunday are both a chance of thunderstorms upwards of 30 to 40 percent. So I would say we take no action at this time. Take, kind of take it week by week, okay? No action on number nine. With that, agenda item number 10, receive an update, any updates on the strategic plan? Any at this time? Hearing none. Take us to agenda item 11. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Motion before the court on agenda item number 11 to adjourn by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There are none? This meeting is adjourned. Commissioners, have a great holiday.